Call this meeting in order. Tonight, we're going to be leading the pledge by Ms. Annie Ralston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to this meeting on the zoning of Buchanan Middle and Oakland Middle. What we're going to do tonight is sort of reverse order to a degree, I guess. Over the last, well, when we last met, February 11th, board members received the comments from the last meeting, and I believe a lot of you have given your comments to Mr. Odom to look at. So, Mr. Odom has come back or has another plan worked up based on the comments, and after he does his presentation, anybody from the general public that wants to speak will allow you three minutes, and then the board can make any comments after that, and we'll just go from there. Okay? Mr. Odom?
On the screen before you now is the zoning map that was proposed that was at Whitworth Buchanan the night we had the public hearing. I guess a few pieces of information came that night. One of the concerns for many people was the area that's north of Halls Hill Pike. That was the one that a number of people spoke to. The proximity, basically Oakland Middle is what that might be. Another thing that came out, I guess, when we learned that the development that's next door to Whitworth Buchanan would have maybe 731 homes in it, so, and that will be built out over probably a few years, but that certainly is a dynamic that can change. There's also additional properties out in that area that have already been approved for development, too, so we look at that. We did some background checking about what type of development around Whitworth Buchanan it might be. So, the area around Whitworth Buchanan with the development they're planning are $200,000-plus homes, not likely to be economically disadvantaged, you know, as that begins to be built out. So, that begins to offset some of the economically disadvantaged numbers that we might see. So, kind of taking those two concerns and some of your concerns and looking at it, Mr. Morgan came up with another proposal, which is certainly cleaner as far as lines. If, Mr. Morgan, if you'll put that one up. And what it basically does is removes all of those areas north of Halls Hill Pike. Now, the downside for that, it certainly leaves more in Oakland Middle, you know, but again, if we put too many students in Whitworth Buchanan and we start building out there, then we're with a couple of years or so down the road, then we're repeating our problem over again. So, my recommendation to you, based upon the feedback from you and the information that we've learned since that time, would be to give serious consideration to the proposal that's on the screen at this time, which is stay basically south of Halls Hill Pike and the shaded area, the red or pink shaded area, house of, south of Halls Hill Pike.
Mr. Odom?
Mr. Odom, the initial thought with the area north of Halls Hill Pike was for transportation reasons, correct?
Well, we basically said if we, these children are already going to Oakland, and you're going to have to run buses basically down that Pike anyway. So, what it was, the only ones we had really included was one where the driveway opened on Halls Hill Pike. If you actually look at the areas, much of it, which was the B, there are not many students at all, you know, they're isolated. If you look at the numbers, you see 1, 3, that sort of thing. So, it's not a dense population. The real change occurs was what used to be E and D, if you look at that proposal, excuse me, and that's the one that's so close to Oakland that you received so many comments about also in that one. So, again, that's where your numbers change, come in the D and E.
Any other general comments?
Were you going to ask for board later?
Board, sorry?
Are you asking for board comments now, or are you going to?
Well, if anybody has any comments for Mr. Odom before the general, general public speak.
Are we going to have the board to comment afterwards?
We'll have comments, more general comments after.
What's our enrollment at Siegel Middle?
About 1,056, I think. Let me, let me look here quickly.
Okay.
Siegel Middle, 1,055.
Okay.
That's fluctuating a little bit between that number and almost 1,100. That's where we have portables. My guess is the next time you're looking at rezoning for Oakland, if we can expand somewhere in that area, it may be on the western side of the Oakland zone between Siegel and Oakland, if there's some way to do some balancing in that area.
Okay.
But that goes all the way out to the north, you know, to Wilson County. That's a huge area, territory there we're talking about.
Right.
That or construction of some type alleviates what it's going to really take.
All right. This time, if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak, feel free to come up to the microphone and state your name, address, and, you know, try to limit it somewhere around three minutes, if you would. Anybody who wants to speak.
My name is Lee Ridgeway. I live at 125 Callaway Court in Murksborough. I live in, right down the street from Buchanan. I asked my wife, I was unable to come, I had a coaches meeting last week and I, or a couple of weeks ago, I couldn't come. So, I asked her, did anybody mention the fact, you know, for working people, our biggest investment is our property, is our homes, our real estate. So, what you're proposing here with the uneven amount of the way it's, we have the free and reduced lunch people, loving parent, or people that are planning on having kids and they're going to move to Murksborough, anybody can see this information. They look at it, all they're going to see is, you know, Murksborough's a good city, but we don't want to live in that school zone right there. So, basically, what you're doing is affecting our property values, too. You know, type of days on the market, I mean, I should be in real estate. So, and if you say you don't look at that stuff and don't care about it, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's just out loud. I mean, you've got to look at that stuff, I mean, as parents. So, that's my concern. It's going to, people can look at that. I look at it. There's no way, if y'all go through this, if I was buying a house, I would never buy a house. If it was that much, you know, out of quake, you know, with the other two or other three or other five schools, and I know you can't get them all just right, but in this case, we were pretty even before this all started. I realize there's overcrowding problem, but, and I know you like lines, apparently, because you're trying to make all the lines nice, but they used to not be nice, but it did affect, make everybody a little more on an even kilter as far as the free and reduced lunch. So, that's, you know, I just don't want my property, because I guarantee you, the tax exception's not going to come out there and lower our property values for tax reasons and purposes, but this is, that's what's going to happen. I mean, you may get some older people that don't care about this, younger people with kids, going to have kids, they're going to look at this, and it's going to affect our property values. So, I would say, look at it in that, from that point of view. So, that's pretty much all I've got to say.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit shorter. My name is Carol Sandstrom. I live at 16199 Manchester Pike in Christiana, down the road from the school. I don't personally have a problem with the number of free and reduced. I was that student, and I don't feel like I detracted from the education that my classmates and I received, or that, hopefully, I was that person that helped to make a difference. So, that doesn't bother me, as long as, I spend a lot of time at the school. My children have additional needs, and I try to be there to help their teachers and to help where I can to kind of lessen that burden, and also as an effort to pay back what was done for me when I was that free and reduced student. So, that's not where my problem lies. But I love our school. I respect our faculty, I respect our staff. I've gotten to know the maintenance crew and the cafeteria workers and the EAs, and my concern is, we are going to have additional needs. If this ends up being the final zoning plan for our school, we are going to have additional needs. We are going to need more EAs, definitely. We're going to need at least one more CDC teacher and an extra EA to help that teacher. We're going to need another resource teacher. We're going to need additional EAs to help the students in inclusion classrooms. We're going to need technology resources. All of those things, I'm sure, are things that you've considered and you've talked about, but we didn't hear any, any numbers as to what was possible and what we could expect to be done in those areas at the last meeting. I know that was a preliminary meeting, and I'm hoping that you will have some of those answers tonight. I've also been doing some research on, on schools who have as high as 97% free and reduced student populations and the ways that they help their schools to be successful and help their students to be successful. And I honestly believe that a lot of those programs could easily be implemented at Whitworth Buchanan, and I'm willing to put my time and my energy into it. I've worked with the PTO for the last three years, and we're willing to do that, and, but a lot of those programs require funding, and we require the use of, of the building after school sometimes, on weekends sometimes. We would require funding for some of those programs that would involve students who come from economically disadvantaged families to help make them more of a part of our, of our school family and to help them be successful. What funds are going to be available for those things? PTO just recently had to use some of our funds to buy a computer because we weren't able anymore to use an unused computer at the school. That money was earmarked for security cameras for the school. Are those things going to be considered? And do you have any of those answers tonight?
Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name is Dustin, last name Johnson. I live in Buchanan Estates, 3115 Sellers Court. We've been there a couple of years, and we moved up here from Florida, and we lived off of Dilton-Mankin, and we moved up here because we liked that area and we was out of the town and we liked the school as we grew into it. I have a daughter who's seven. She is in first grade. I have a son who's in fourth grade, who this is really going to affect, and I have a, oldest boy is in seventh grade now at Whitworth. And I'm probably well aware that he'll probably get grandfathered in if this stays as is, but I'm just confused on a few things. I'm not understanding why I should put my kid on a bus, three different buses in the same house, if this proposal goes through that, for only about 15, 20 kids, from my understanding in that neighborhood. That's not the overcrowding issue, that neighborhood. I understand you guys have a tough issue, but I'm coming at you as a father, as you guys probably understand, and I have a daughter who's seven. If this proposal goes through, not next year, but the following year, she'll be riding on her own, she'll lose her brothers as her cover. It'll be a lot less safer for her, and I'll have one in high school, which I understand he'd be on a different bus, but now I'll have three buses, three kids. That's not a good selling point for that house, if someone moves into that house. And it's a family house. It's on a cul-de-sac, it's a four-bedroom. No one's going to move in there with one kid. And it's just disappointing to be living in a place called Buchanan Estates, right down the road, less than five miles, I can get there in six minutes, and be shipped down Route 269. And let me just go ahead and tell you guys, there's no shoulder on that road. Get on that road in a bus, in a little bit of rain. Just please, get on that road in a little bit of rain, and I want you to look to your left or your right and see some of the ditches and you getting Christiana. If that bus goes off, there won't be some kids that will be coming home to their parents. I promise you. And that is my number one concern. I'm not, I don't care if my kid goes to Christiana, because I'm sure it's a great school. I don't have a problem with it. That's not my issue. My issue is my safety, and my issue is my kids and my family, and I don't understand why I'd have taken a school away from me that's right down the road to put my kid on a bus at an earlier time because he's further away from the school, three different kids, it's just going to tear this, we would have to move. We've already done the math. The way the bus stops would work, one would be a certain time, one would be another. There's laws I've got to watch. I can't just leave my kids hanging around my house while I'm trying to go work, you know. I know you guys are tough, and I came from Florida, and this, Pinellas County's overcrowded and they had issues. This is across the United States. You got, we're growing. So, I know you guys didn't create this problem and you're trying your best, but I just, you know, from my standpoint, you know, I just put in new carpet and we were doing our house, and we just put our investment in this for two years, and we would have to move. We just, it does not make sense for my family to accept that, and, you know, and that would be disturbing because, okay, I'm done.
My name is Scott Moore. I live at 2837 Cliffside Drive in Christiana, and I guess one of the aspects of this that I was hoping that would get discussed tonight is the grandfathering, you know, so hopefully, you know, I haven't heard it discussed really yet as to what is going to qualify for grandfathering, and hopefully that, that that can be discussed. And that's really all I had to say.
Anyone else? All right. I guess what we'll do, Mr. Odom, if it's agreeable to you, and any board members, I'd rather let you address them first, some of these concerns.
The concern about the socio-economic is really the feeder base that you're looking at. If you look at Black Fox, which feeds it from the city system, basically, you look at Kittrel, which is around 70-something percent socio-economic disadvantage. When we, we stop and look at that, the only way you can correct socio-economic is to bus children to other neighborhoods. I know the city this year, they did rezoning, and they actually backed away from doing as much bus, and they have done more local areas, too. We have quite a bit of experience really dealing with socio, high socio-economic areas and the scores associated with it. You get certainly John Coleman, Cedar Grove, many of them in that Schmunter area, which is areas that I know that you serve, we do put extra resources there. And it comes in EAs, it comes in teachers. It depends a lot on the student population, that we have a formula that determines how many special ed, but socio-economic does not mean special education. So, you can't always say that that's going to result in a learning disability, you know, so that is driven by student numbers. We do the census related to that. We do that prior to the start of school, because we, once we look at the addresses, do our promotions, grade promotions and that sort of thing, then our special ed department looks at staffing again. So, that's what we do with that. Last year, your most recent that you did a lot of zoning was really with Laverne High School. I was there this morning, a little after 7:00, and we looked at, looking at some of their scores. It's impressive. I mean, they're the ones now that's got the dual enrollment, the dual credit. I actually asked Mr. Ash, I said, "How, how about the staffing? We left you with extra staffing." And I said, "Are you okay? Do you need more?" He says, "We are good. We actually lowered our freshman academy numbers." He said, "Most of our algebra's around the 1 to 20," or something like that, "and it's working." He said, "Right now, I couldn't tell you that I need something else." And that's what you have to do with each of these schools. You have to go back and look, and what's the need, what academic areas, what kind of ratios that you can do within your space and your capacities, and provide those resources. And we have to do the same, whether it would be Whitworth Buchanan or Oakland Middle or anywhere else, so we have to do that. I'm, I'm not sure on the gentleman exactly, can you point out exactly where he might live on that one? Do you have your pointer with you or something?
Is that Cliffside?
The last one?
In Sellers, they're both in the same neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, Buchanan Estates. It'll take just a second.
I thought you as a board member might want to look and see what he's talking about, for sure, on that one.
Sellers Court.
Yes, sir.
It's that area that I'm circling.
You can see, it put a pin, put a green dot there.
Did Mr. Snell say anything about buses on that road?
No, ma'am, this change really does not impact, he has not quoted anything to me about this specific one. I mean, runs obviously the whole county, but he hasn't made a comment to me about that specific area. He looked again up here at the Shady Lane, or Shady Lane, the Halls Hill Pike area.
But he, as far as any concerns on any of this other, he hadn't, he hadn't expressed nothing?
No. I mean, regardless of which school, there's got to be a bus going there, so I mean, that's your bottom line. Where that bus terminates is, you know, our decision is for zoning, but there's got to be a bus there regardless.
My concern about it was just the safety of the roads. Between 269, there are no shoulders, and there's no rails. And I know some of you guys have been on the Dow and Miller Road, you know what I'm talking about. Compared to just going over 24 and getting on Manchester where there's a bike ramp or path cracked down the side, it's just a safety thing, for me, really. Sorry, I don't know if I was allowed to do that. I didn't hear your opinion, so I just kept on. That's my biggest concern, is, and it's obviously earlier. I would probably have to keep my ticket up early if it's further than that.
Well, for your point, I have a friend who has grandchildren in that, right next to where you are.
Yes, sir.
And I understand.
Yeah, my experience is 15, 4 years now, if I want to sell my house. I'm going to have three schools, that same type of situation.
Right. And right now, they do, too. They have a child going to, an elementary child going to Christiana and a middle school going to Buchanan, so it's, it's hard.
Yeah, that's not not Christiana, it's probably great. I'm not wrong with it at all. I really don't. It's just, there's this, there, forgive me, there's common sense sometimes that I like to think at, and I know, I look at it my way, and you guys have your way. I mean, from a common sense standpoint, this particular neighborhood doesn't make sense to pull away from Buchanan. That's from the standpoint of the risk of the bus earlier in time zone and the situation that I would with three kids, three of them bussed home from that. My daughter, my mom, it would just really, really break down the way we can handle our mornings and our, we'd have to move. You just know in the way, because my youngest is my daughter. Hang on, sorry.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Is this time for board comments?
Yeah.
You know, personally, I would like to relieve Oakland Middle by, by several more students, but I do have a concern with this new development coming in. It appears that it's going to be very aggressive, and I know in the past, that's been one of our greatest fears, is to move children and then in two or three years, move them again. So, we've, we've tried to be as consistent with that as we possibly can be. Another frustration from parents in the past has been not having clear zone lines with utilizing a major artery by gerrymandering, if you will, with some kind of squiggly border. So, you know, there's prob, I understand there's going to be complaints that this, this is inconvenient, this doesn't work, but it really squares up the zone, and the blessing that we have is that all of these middle schools are, are either brand-new or, or pretty new with excellent administrations and excellent faculties. And I, I like this proposal, Mr. Odom, and I'm prepared to, to support it.
Typically, the feeder school, just to remind everybody, usually you have between two and three elementary schools that will feed a middle school. And likewise, when you get to the high school level, you're approaching 1,800, 2,000 students, that sort of thing. There typically, again, most of the time, it's not more than two middle schools that will actually feed a high school. So, you kind of have, based on size, people-teacher ratio, you kind of have that three into two middles, and then two middles at least into the high school. In a few cases, you might even pick up the third one, but typically, that's what you run into.
Can you answer for me, because I don't know how the exemption policy impacts? And I don't know because, I mean, we've been here two months, and in saying that, this group, outside of myself, Tim Tackett, who's sat in this seat, this group was recognized as the most outstanding school board in the state of Tennessee, and I think they deserve credit for that. I played no part in that role, but I want to thank this board for that accomplishment. And since I don't know, how do exemptions work, Mr. Odom? How is that?
If you're looking at, if, if you're talking about a grandfather exemption, it will specify basically what grades are covered and for, very often, how long, and are their siblings included, yes or no. The other exemption process, in a typical year, Mr. Evans fills most of those initially. We have a level of 1,200, typically exemption requests per year, and it, for all sorts of reasons and the other thing, like sometimes it's, it's medical and fragile with children. The ones that typically do not get through are the ones that are for convenience situations, you know, but others where there's some legitimate reason or something we can say do that, we honor a lot of exemptions. And once we grant an exemption, the student, unless something changes, the student can remain in that particular school for the duration. For example, if you receive an exemption to a middle school, if you choose to stay there sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you know, you can do that. If it was a high school, you'd be all of high school. Again, that's our desire not to move students around very often, but I think probably there'll be a motion to deal with that tonight by one of the board members, you know, in this.
The exemption process that you speak of, that is not the grandfathering, but our standard exemption process, it always comes, though, with a transportation exclusion. And so, if that exemption is granted, then transportation is not provided by the board. And I think that's worth pointing out, because there have to be decisions made, and again, I come back to, you know, there's a reason for what we may refer to as squiggly or gerrymandering type school zones, because it does make sense from a transportation aspect, that we don't have buses that are passing one another on these major thoroughfares, and yet one is heading to Oakland Middle School and the other one is heading to Whitworth Buchanan, but they're both traveling down Halls Hill Pike. The initial thought there with the, the squiggly lines or those drives that empty on the Halls Hill Pike, the bus traffic that goes up and down Halls Hill Pike would grab everybody there and be able to head in one direction. There's benefit to having clear lines, but, you know, there's, there's some transportation expense there as well, and making a decision between those two options is, is what the board is looking at. I see benefit on both sides. So, I don't know that it alleviates some of the concerns that we've, that we've heard tonight, if we start in the direction of the if we start in the direction of the, the per pupil exemption, because none of that comes with transportation provided.
And typically, our, our mode of bus pickup, and we can tell it by the staggered start of our schools. I mean, some elevens, I think the earliest is maybe seven fifteen, but most are around the seven thirty range. And then you follow with your middle schools, which are typically more around eight, and the high schools, eight fifteen to eight thirty. So in cases where the population is relatively dense, closer into the city and that sort of thing, you're probably gonna see an elementary bus, you probably will see a middle school bus that'll come through a little bit later, and you'll see a high school bus. You get out around Egleville, some of the far reaches of Rock Vale and some of the areas in the county, you may wind up and see an elementary bus or a middle high school is collected together. You know, in some instances like that, again, that becomes an economic thing and also bus loads and trying to balance those, so we do look at that.
I guess I got a question for you, Mr. Odom. Back to Maple's property, the total number of houses she's gonna develop?
Well, the number they threw out, I believe was seven thirty-one, I think that was the number that they told us. Of course, that's one of those things you don't know, is this, how many, is this gonna be in five years, fifteen years, or what? My guess is, that's not all gonna come at once, but you also have the Jones property and some others out there that may start also. And, and, and some of us, we have, we have so many around the Rock Vale area and the Christiana area with the lots or, the zoning has already been approved. They, they've been through, some of it is city. And again, you'll see buses that may, in some of these areas, a city bus may run through even before hours does. But I think probably when the economy turned down, banks basically started slowing down on, on lots. So I think one of the, the things, if, if, if that loosens, and it's beginning to loosen up a little bit, Rutherford County could be in another boom. You know, well, over eleven hundred students this year. We did see back in the two thousand six, five, six range, we were looking at sixteen hundred one year, fifteen hundred and off. I, I will kind of be surprised, you know, if it doesn't top that eleven, something we had this year. The real unknown for us, of course, it can change the dynamic a little, there's a new city school coming on board. You know, it should be out around Veterans Parkway. So when they have that in place in August, very often when one of us opens a new school, new bricks draw sometimes, you may see a one-year adjustment, you know, in there as people make that selection.
But the dollar amount on these houses, you said what, two hundred thousand?
The figure that they gave us was really about two twenty-five up to maybe three fifty or so. It's what, speculating, but you know, I mean, if you're ten years out, three fifty, probably four twenty-five or something, or whatever. But thinking about starting out over two hundred certainly is a different dynamic than we see in many areas.
I guess the point I'm making is, we don't know how many, but with the land being right adjoining, what we've got out there, it's hard for me to believe it won't knock it free and reduced now.
Well, I mean, it, it, it's a count of students, and so if you add additional students that are not free introduced, percent's going to go down unless there's something that offsets it in another area, another big development or another type.
But that being right on top of school?
Yeah, they're gonna go there.
Yeah.
I mean, most instances.
I think we go back to the reason why we're here to start with is because Oakland Middle School was so crowded.
I know.
If you look around Oakland Middle, we'll see how that's developed. And I look for the same thing to happen before it began. Also, it just doesn't have time to do it, now it's coming. We've gotta leave room there for that, although we'll be, we'll be back up here again in two or three years, rezoning again. Mr. Blair's already commented on that, I think we've gotta take that into consideration.
We're running forty-two or forty-three percent this year district-wide, and everything, so that's some, some schools that are up in the eighty percent or so range, down to some schools that would be certainly less than that, depending upon the area that they might be in. And Dr. Gilbert told me the city is about fifty-something percent. In fact, I've heard her use a figure fifty-eight percent economically disadvantaged. Well, we typically get all of those students. And I think I shared something with you in the fact book and some information, if you remember that, as little as around two thousand, the whole Rutherford County was twenty-seven percent economically disadvantaged. So if you really can begin to see, we've had typically in Rutherford County as a whole, about a one percent rise or to one and a quarter every year since that time. So again, that's just, that's an economic in what, what happens to be developing.
A minute, I guess before we move, move forward, anyone have any ideas on the grandfathering and stuff like that, or? I'm open to listening to any. Ms. Black, Chief?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the revised Oakland Middle, Whitworth, Buchanan and Christiana Middle Schools combined rezoning as presented at the beginning of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Rezone the students that are currently enrolled as sixth graders and seventh graders to be maybe elected, elect to stay and option to maintain their two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school for the remainder of their middle school years via the zone exemption process.
Second.
We'll get a motion by Ms. Black and Chief in a second, but Mr. Blair, any further discussion?
And, and we did this type process with, with the Stewart's Creek, especially with, with Blackman High School, that if you wanted to stay at Blackman High School, you were allowed to, fell out of the zone exemption and, and it was, and it was approved and you could stay. But of course, like Mr. Holliday said, you, you provide your own transportation. So that's how we've done it in the past.
Mr. Nipper?
You know, I, I think back when we started this, our original intent was to give some relief to Oakland Middle. And I, but to me, based upon this map that we have right now, or we propose to vote on, that we're not giving them that much relief. And we know it's gonna be two or three years or longer before we can get them a building or any addition built out there to give them relief. And I, I don't see coming back and redoing this next year again. So, so we're basically telling Oakland Middle, you're, they're eleven hundred and eighty right now, I believe. How much higher are they gonna be in two to three years? Because that's a high-growth area too, and you're gonna have feeder coming from the city schools going into it. So I mean, I don't see that we're really doing anything except straightening lines.
It knocked off about sixty or so. I've seen at Oakland Middle this year from about ten ninety-seven to eleven oh-seven or so, and every day it changes a little, so. You're probably somewhere in that range, probably?
Right around there, I think, eleven, eleven-ten.
Okay, so it may up a little bit more then.
Anybody else? Ms. Holliday?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things we really haven't spoken of yet, I know the director talked about it just a little bit, but the impact of the free and reduced, as far as the classroom and additional personnel. We have had experience, as you've mentioned, in the Laverne and Smyrna area for the impact of Stewart's Creek rezoning. And the results are, like you said, very positive. From a board perspective, that didn't happen by, by accident. It happened very much because the board was very concerned about that and kept tabs on it. And I just wanted to mention from the board, and I know the director has spoken to this, but from the board as well, we'll continue to keep tabs on that and make sure that it's not vaguely addressed, but specifically addressed.
Well, and I trust that the central office would have been proactive with, with, with those two schools even without our interest, because they're committed to the excellence of this system. And so I, I'm, I'm confident that whatever resources that may be needed or, or should, or will be needed will be, will be taken care of by, by your leadership, Mr. Odom.
But in my understanding, how do you determine, how do you determine when you add additional staff? I mean, what are the ratios or what are the numbers?
Typically, with a special ed teacher, if you're talking about comprehensive development, you mentioned that before, that depends upon the severity of the students in that comprehensive development. And also age appropriateness for that. Those come sometime with, when you go from five to eight, you may even have to add additional one there. The typical resource teacher for learning disabled student, they will serve each somewhere in the ratio of one to twenty-five, one to thirty, somewhere in that range, which is very similar to the number of students that you have in the classroom. One of the things that's beginning to change with this RTI square, which you know, that model we're doing, we are actually planning already for next year, looking through eighth grade, the coach in each school for that and then interventions for that, interventionists for that. Whitworth Buchanan, Oakland Middle, the others already have one interventionist for the math and for the reading, language arts already. And we, we've done that a number of years ago, maybe a dozen years ago, we were actually looking at that. So that's another thing we monitor some this year, we actually added additional ones to some schools this year, you know, for that. That's driven by need and economics, budget, you know, that, that's, you know, just being factual, that's the two things that drives that. It's our desire to put, put the people there. The most important resource we have is the people, is the hands to, to serve the students and the needs that they have. Will you ever have everything you want? I don't know, that, that, you know, that, that's a tough thing to say, but, but I, I guarantee you, you can tell from our scores and the fact that we pay a lot of attention for that.
And when you mentioned coach, you mean specifically?
It's academic coach.
Related to that specific discipline, that's there to help those teachers in that discipline to better serve the students involved in those classrooms.
We're talking about an academic coach, lead coach, and then we're talking about interventionist that serve underneath that specifically for math, for language arts. And the responsive intervention model that we're looking at, and which is the state is adopting, interesting, I'll just throw this little, chase this little rabbit. Mr. Zago was telling me this afternoon, he's been contacted with about five districts that wants us to come and show them how we are planning RTI square, that the state and other people are telling them. And we're basically telling them, you're gonna have to come look at us, we can't go everywhere and do that and set yours up. But I'm, I'm really confident, feel really good about that, and that requires the screening at least three times a year of students in specific skills, you know, related mostly to reading and math, language arts. Like I say, was in, I was in Laverne today, and, and they have, every freshman that comes in there goes through, they have a reading academy program that they're taking them through. And he was showing me graphically today, and they're doing it with LexIs, which is reading level. And, and it's very apparent to me, just looking at the, the average scores, looking at those graphs, that these kids are picking up a reading level and doing it. So we know how to do it, if we can get the, the hands to do it, and the people, materials to do it, we can do it. It just takes a little longer sometimes.
The role of an interventionist now is to take those children who aren't where perhaps they need to be and find a, a method to move them forward. It might be using an EA to assist in moving that child forward, and it might be the interventionist him or herself. And so they're involved in that.
It's also time, it's also time. Time-driven, if you're, if you are a level one in the RTI, there's three levels. If you're, if you're the level one in the RTI, and basically our elementary in the middle, it's, it's an hour of math. As close as we can, sometime with scheduling, fifty-five minutes or so, with an hour in your reading, language arts. Well, then that student that, that, then is still deficit skills, and you go to tier two. Then the, your first thing is to try to address as much as you can in that classroom, maybe with assistance and all. As you progress through tier two and the severity increases some, then you look at, I mean, we do not pull students out very quickly, and, and let me explain why this is important. Sometimes when you pull out and do your severe remediation, intensive mediation would be a better term, you're working on skills that are deficit behind. So what we're finding is, you still need to expose that student to their grade level skills. In one area, in their learning disability, they may be in, in sixth grade, but in their learning disability in some phonemic awareness or some area that it might be, comprehension or something, they may be more like a fourth grade student. But if you pull them down here and do only fourth grade work with them, where, where is that sixth grade skill? So that's what, that's why we're talking about inclusion, when you can, that students can remain in their classroom so that additional thirty minutes and that additional time that might come in the more intensive would be in addition to their time that they're having in their classroom for their grade level instruction. So you're, you're at the same time trying to, trying to help them stay up to where they are, but then fill in the gaps at the lower level.
Anybody else?
Mr. Black, would you be willing to add one more?
We'll take one more question, only since we've, we've started it, we'll go ahead and do yours also. If you don't mind, if you.
Do you guys all know me? My name's Lisa Moore. We live at twenty-eight thirty-seven Cliffside, which is also part of, if I understand it correctly, Section H, which is the Cliffside or the Buchanan Estate subdivision. Now, I, I have a real quick question I'd like to ask for clarification. That's the Section H that shows up on the screen. Are those numbers where it shows sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, are those current numbers or are those next year's numbers?
They're, they're.
They're current. So the numbers that are in the eighth grade slot are virtually gonna be, they don't apply to total numbers anymore then, correct?
We have to have something to plan with.
Sure, I understand.
We're not sure from one year to the next because of the city zone.
What he runs into.
Okay. Coming up from fifth grade also, okay.
As Mr. Odom explained earlier, you know, if we have benefit of knowing what we're gonna get from the new elementary school.
Yeah, okay.
We, we have to plan with something.
Right.
And this is a, a best scenario.
Well, when I look at those.
What we've discovered is the pattern tends to be very much the same.
Right.
Year to year. But I mean, again, there could be more variation this year because of the new city school.
Okay. Well, we don't have quite the dire situation with this family back here does. We have one child and he'll be moving into the eighth grade, he's at Whitworth. He's a straight A student and he plays baseball and he loves his school. So we've already made the decision as a family that if the grandfathering is allowed, that's what we'll do, and we're gonna keep him at Whitworth. But at the end of the day, not to have transportation services will be a hardship, it will be challenging. Obviously, we've gotta make that decision for him and for our family. But when you look at the smallness of that area and the relation and the fact that it really doesn't impact Oakland's numbers, and I understand it all, all plays together, if those lines aren't set in cement and it's not already decided, I would request that you take another look at that area. Thank you.
H is what you're saying specifically.
I, I need just one more, like if I could please.
All right, this will be the last one.
And I apologize for being late, not being able to speak earlier, and I'll tell you a little more about that. As I spoke at the last meeting, I am a single mom and I work in Nashville, so the traffic getting back to this way was horrendous.
Can you give us your name and address?
Sure, my name is Laura Medina. My address is seven five four six Antietam Lane. And as I spoke at the last meeting, because I work so far away, I've worked. And as I spoke at the last meeting, because I work so far away, I've worked hard to get a team of people that would help me with my daughter in school to allow her to participate in after-school activities such as academic tutoring, and when she stays after school for the tutoring, I need someone to bring her home. Although the bus is a good thing to have during the regular day, if she's requested to stay after school, then I have no way to go get her. And since she's been in elementary school, I've cultivated a team of people, neighbors and family, who would be willing to go get her. Right now, I'm zoned to go to Oakland, she's a fifth grader, and she would be going into sixth grade, and so I know this is just one student, but this would help alleviate if she was able to go to Segal. And I picked up the paperwork, how I found out about these meetings here, is that I picked up the paperwork for a zone waiver, and I noticed on there that practically every middle school that you'd want a waiver form for, it says it's full and you can't request, you can't request a transfer into those schools. I'm about five miles from Segal, and it will double the distance for us to go to Oakland. My support system in picking up my daughter from after-school activities will diminish if she goes to Oakland. Right now, it's a great program, tomorrow they have open gym at her elementary school, and she could be in tutoring from three to four, where she needs it in math, and then go on to open gym, and the route that the school's on, my mother would be able to pick her up and bring her home, the same as if she were to go to Segal. People travel up and down Thompson Lane and consider that on their way to many places, whereas Oakland, they would think that's taking them out of the way. If we were forced to go to Oakland, it would be impossible for her to stay after school for anything, she'd have to always ride the bus home because of, because of the route I take from work and everyone else that I know that would be able to help me. It would be an extreme hardship for this single mom. So, I just asked that, you already have a waiver form in place, I have a copy of the form here, but it has so many restrictions on here as to schools that I think that I'm just not even allowed to fill it out for it to even be considered. It seems like it's automatically saying on the form that I can't submit the form, just as you have already said that you could grandfather some people in, and that might be a possibility. I ask that it be a possibility that this form would, would work, would work for us in some way.
What, what school you say your child goes to now?
She currently goes to Walter Hill.
And she's zoned for what, Segal?
She'll be zoned for, according to that, is Oakland.
And where do you want her to go?
Segal. I have the form here if you'd like to sign it.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything, I don't have anything to do with that, Mr. Evans deals with that, I'm just trying to get it straight.
Yeah.
If you're in Buchanan, Oakland, Bill, that's what I was.
Yeah, we, we are just five minutes to Segal, and it's about eleven, I'm sorry, five miles to Segal, and it's about eleven miles to Oakland, but the rural way that it goes, none of my neighbors or family would ever be passing by that way. I mean, I just rely on them to help me out with the transportation.
I guess, have you, have you filed anything with Mr. Evans, zone exemption?
The application, because the board has a policy that overcrowded schools cannot accept zone exemptions, and so the application has those schools listed that are overcrowded.
Correct.
Middle schools right now that can currently accept zone exemptions according to that policy would be Stewart's Creek Middle, Christiana, Whitworth, some in Eagleville Middle School, a very few in Eagleville Middle School. That's it at this point. I know where Antietam is, my, my parents used to live in Antietam, and I believe the route that they have of transportation that takes you up Jefferson Pike to Betty Ford, and then over to Ninety-six, which kind of comes the back way to Oakland, I don't have any exact address, but that's the way the route goes. If you go the long way, then it probably is closer to eleven miles.
Well, the other thing is, she would be zoned for Segal High School, and she has a cousin who's turning sixteen who goes to Segal High School who would have a driver's license. I mean, that just seems like the easiest fix for me.
So, it's just one of those situations for Segal Middle Schools and overcrowded schools, so for an overcrowded, close to eleven miles right now, you're supposed to have no one to dial.
I mean, I, I understand all that.
But then so is Oakland.
What's that?
I said, but then so is Oakland overcrowded.
Correct.
If, if we've got both schools overcrowded, I don't see why that would be the determining factor where I'm required to go.
Well, we could debate it all night long, but, I mean, that's, that's the rule we got, you know, on overcrowded schools. I don't know if any other board member wants to say anything, but.
I would advise her to make an appointment with Mr. Odom and talk to him personally.
Fill out the zone exemption, even though it's closed.
I have it.
Fill it, fill it out, and you give it to Mr. James, and we look at it, like I said, we have to look at them at a case-by-case basis. The issue that you run into in that, if, and just being honest, if you and thirty more decide to, then we, we've got a real problem. If you're the only one or two, then you have a little bit of flexibility in some of that, but if, if.
I won't tell anybody.
It's a numbers, it's a numbers game, it's a numbers game, unfortunately, because we don't have reserve capacity, that's our issue.
I appreciate your time and listening, I know it's a hard decision to make, like I said, but being that I'm trying to do this on my own with just as many people who are willing to help me, I know that they'd be willing to help me go down that Thompson Lane as they go to hit the interstate, but going the other way, I'd get less and less people willing to answer my calls when I call them to help me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Do you have a second question or some follow-up?
Anybody else? Got a motion by Mrs. Blankenship and a second by Mrs., uh, Mr. Blair. Ms. Mike, if you would, call roll, please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Nipper?
No.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Eats?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
All right, anything else? Mr. Odom, you be putting this on the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think we, Mr. Odom, you ought to explain the, the zone exemption process again, just like we, like we did at, at Blackman High School, just that, so everybody does understand.
James has, asked to post it typically in writing on the website, too, if we could let him speak and.
I do, and I wanted to say, especially to the parents who are here tonight, I have applications tonight if you want them, I have blank applications, we're taking zone exemptions through April fifteenth, so I would just encourage you to do it quickly, turn it in, but I'd be happy to give you blank forms tonight, but the zone exemption, if I understand the motion correctly, would grandfather students who will be seventh and eighth graders next year.
Will there still be the new one?
Yes, ma'am. And the reason we use the zone exemption form, just so parents may be wondering why we do that, it's an automatic approval, we just verify that your address is affected, that's one thing, and you'd be surprised, some people get confused by the map, and they, they think they're affected, but they're not, and we can also then keep track of who took the option, so we know how many students actually stayed and went, so that's the reason we use that form. But it's a simple process, and I'd be happy to give you the form after this meeting if you'd like one.
And that's what I wanted you to emphasize, what's the term automatic?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. As long as they qualify for the grandfather option, it will be automatic.
Yes.
Any one else? I'd like to, before we close, just thank Ms. Edwards, Ms. Rost, and Mr. Horn, and I think Ms. Seymour's here somewhere.
She's behind the podium.
Okay. The principals for all these middle schools that are affected, so I appreciate each of your support on this issue, so, anything else? Nothing else, we'll adjourn.